All right, let's start. So, thanks, everybody, for coming to our Tuesday, July 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'd like to recognize who we are, meeting on the traditional unceded territories of the Comox First Nation. And we, I believe, have a couple of delegations. So, we're going to start with the Seafood Innovation Center of Vancouver Island University, and we have Carl Butterworth.
Hello.
There we go.
And let me start my timer. Thank you very much for having me out today. My name's Carl Butterworth. I'm the manager of the Deep Bay Marine Field Station for Vancouver Island University. And I'd like to tell you a little bit today just about who we are as part of VIU and what we're doing, talk to you about a seafood innovation center proposal that we have in, and talk about some of the exciting spin-off benefits, I think, there are economically for the Comox Valley out of this initiative. So, we are part of Vancouver Island University, and we are primarily a research division for VIU. So, we do research for the shellfish aquaculture industry, both pure and applied research. We also work with our advanced environmental research laboratory to do research around air and water quality, and we have quite an interesting research portfolio underway at the station right now.
And you don't have a PowerPoint today, right?
No.
Okay, excellent.
I'm the pony dog and pony show you get today.
Perfect.
And we are actually on the traditional unceded territory of the Qualicum First Nation, who I'd like to mention here today because they are tremendous supporters of the work we do, and the chief is a regular visitor to the station, which we really value, and we value his wisdom. And we are starting to work a bit more with the Comox First Nation, particularly around seafood innovation, since this is something that is near and dear to their hearts. So, our research right now, we do quite a bit of research on Bane Sound. It's a unique body of water. Some of the work we're doing is looking at the entire water column in Bane Sound, looking at how the sound is responding to environmental change. So, as you have more anthropogenic CO2 in the atmosphere, what does that do to the basic carbon chemistry of the water? How is that changing Bane Sound specifically as a body of water? What does that mean for the microbes in the water column? Where do they sit? How does that affect all of the organisms in Bane Sound, but specifically, we look at shellfish aquaculture? So, how does that affect oyster farmers, gooey duck farmers, and others like that? And in response to environmental change, we're also looking right now at Pacific oyster brood stock development. So, really looking at, you know, what are the reasons behind mortality in the field? And right now, it's not uncommon for a shellfish farmer to have between 20 and 90% mortality just before a crop goes to market, which you can imagine is devastating. And right now, there is no crop insurance for oyster farmers. So, one of our main lines of research is developing through natural selection a line of Pacific oysters that are hardier to environmental change, more resistant to local diseases, will grow at a rate that is commercially desirable, form a nice round shell, do other things that the oyster farmers would like. So, a lot of our research is very informed by industry, right? And we're looking at, you know, farmed oyster industry right now is worth about $14 million to BC, which makes it a fairly small industry. But with appropriate help and research, we think that could be a much bigger industry. And it is overall a very good news industry. It's an incredibly environmentally sustainable industry, even to the point of being less economically sustainable because of the degree to which they are environmentally sustainable. In addition to that, we do a lot of industrial research trials, and as I mentioned, we're getting into more air and water quality monitoring. So, looking at the health of both the air shed and the water shed. And in this, we do a lot of work, as you can imagine, with the BC Shellfish Growers Association, who are based here in Comox. And through our work with them, they brought to our attention that the Ministry of Agriculture is looking to develop regional food innovation centers. And they really want to support the Grow BC, Feed BC, and Buy BC program. So, those are programs that are designed to help BC farmers get a bit of a leg up, produce more food within BC, then see that food consumed more than BC, so preferentially going to BC institutions, hospitals, schools, wherever food is sold by the province, and then also really helping with export development. So, what can we do to get BC food entrepreneurs out into the bigger environment? And so, they approached us and said, you know, you guys are doing half of this. You should really look at being a shellfish innovation center. And so, we went through the process, and we pitched that to the province and said, look, you know, we could develop a really interesting, you know, shellfish innovation center here. And what we would do with this is go pre-farm right through to plate. So, right now, part of our projects, as I've just said, are looking at the genetics of oysters, Pacific oyster in specific, and working with natural selection to develop them. So, we have a brood stock that's really going to perform better in BC waters, have lower mortality, and get more product to the plate. So, we're really starting pre-plate with this, and then going through that, looking at farming techniques, where we can apply research to different farming techniques, and find a way to keep oysters alive in the field, or whatever the shellfish we're looking at. Then getting into the cooking side, VIU has a culinary arts department. So, where somebody, the food entrepreneur, has a recipe, we can help them with access to professional chefs to help to develop that. And then getting into the marketing, so bringing in members of the food value chain, you know, the big grocery stores, the big supply chain people, the export development companies, and saying, okay, well, here's this person with this great recipe. Now, we've helped them to develop a bit more. How will this resonate in Asia? You know, how will this resonate across Canada? Will this sell in PEI? Where do we have seafood markets that we can take this product into? And have them say, well, okay, you know, it looks good, but I think we need to look at your packaging. This won't resonate in Asia. Or if we send this packaging to Quebec, we need to have it in two official languages. Bring in those people who really understand that value chain and have them be part of this innovation center. And then look at the packaging, you know, packaging innovation. What can we do with processing that's different? How can we get more value out of seafood? Where do we have to add value to it to get that? And so, we pitched that to the province, and they were very receptive. And they said, you know, this is really great, but we would like you to go one step further. We want a seafood innovation center. Nobody has pitched anything to do with seafood. So, we've been asked to expand our proposal and really encompass everything. So, shellfish, kelp, and finfish as well, and really look at everything that comes out of our aquaculture and our wild fisheries, and see where we could help to push that forward in an economic development sense. And so, for the Comox Valley Regional District, we are literally a hair's breadth south of you. Like, if the wind blows and the trees bend properly, I can see you guys right out of my office window. And just logistically speaking, in terms of major centers that we have access to, we are much closer to Courtney, Comox, than we are to Nanaimo and to Parksville. So, there's a lot of economic benefit that we see here. And the first one, when we look at seafood innovation, let me just make sure I'm good on my timing. Oh, yeah, lots of time. The biggest gap that we have at Deep Bay as a facility is that we don't have a processing plant. But the Comox First Nation has an exceptional processing plant right in Comox, Sailor Seafoods, run by Pen Latch. So, we've been in talks with them about being part of this innovation center, so having the Comox First Nation be the processing part of this. So, where we have new equipment and new techniques that we want to trial, taking those into Sailor Seafoods, getting those installed there, and helping them be part of our innovation center, so that we can start to bring that forward. And there's other Comox Valley businesses that we've looked at that fill gaps that VIU doesn't have around food sciences and other areas, where we have some expertise but haven't really fully developed it. So, this innovation center really will be more of a hub. You know, we'll do what a university does well, which is research, is coordinate things, and bring together people in a common place. The things we don't do well are moving at the speed of business, right? We are a bureaucracy that makes government look extremely efficient and move like the speed of light. And I say that because I'm part of it. But at the same time, there's things we don't do well, right? And we don't want to take on those parts of a food innovation center. We really want this to be a success. This could be really exciting. And this isn't a resource that all British Colombians would have access to. So, we want to outsource parts of that innovation center to private companies who can move at the speed of business, who can sign a contract overnight, who can make quick decisions and make things move forward. So, we'll be looking to develop a network of businesses to go along with both us and North Island College will be a part of this as well, and really focus on the strengths of those kind of organizations and have it set up where the parts that need to move quickly can move quickly, where businesses across Canada are networked into that, the ones who are part of the buying value chain, who can say, I love what you guys are developing over here. This entrepreneur's recipe will resonate with our customers, and beyond that, we think it can go further afield, and really find the people to accelerate that. And then on top of that is obviously the layer of investment. So, if somebody is a small entrepreneur out of Comox with a family recipe that they want to take national, how are they going to get that money? And that will all be part of this, along with marketing support, development support, packaging and processing. So, that's what we're trying to develop. The province funded a feasibility study for us in 2018, and the feasibility study consulted all stakeholders within seafood in British Columbia. So, that was the wild fisheries, aquaculture, going through all of the processing plants, and then looking at the grocery stores and the value chain. And overwhelmingly, the response was, yes, we need a seafood innovation center. Seafood as an industry hasn't innovated in a significant way in 50 years. It has really been the same sort of thing. And part of that is a reflection of supply and demand. There is a lot of demand for BC seafood product. Most of it goes straight out the door and onto plates. Farmed salmon is a great example. Nothing is done to that, other than having the head cut off, fillets taken off, and it goes out, and every single scrap is sold. So, there hasn't been the need to add value. But now, we're getting to a point where there is more product available, where there are opportunities to add value, and there are opportunities in a broader marketplace to get that food out to people. So, that is what we're looking at. The feasibility study came back looking really good. Our problem as a university now is just, is this something we can do? Because we don't want to take this on and see it fail. We want to make sure that if we pick this up and run with this, that we, that with the partners that we choose to work with, are in a position to make this successful. So, right now, the province is in the process of looking at funding a business plan for us, so we can afford to bring in a consultant who specializes in this area, to develop a business plan that'll work for VIU, but also deliver on this mandate, because we want to make sure this is a success above all else, and we don't want to take it on unless it's going to work. So, that's where we're at on this. I wanted to come here today and really make you guys aware of this, because I think there's tremendous economic spin-off benefit for the Comox Valley, and I think there's a lot of work that would happen. And when you think about it logically, even though the center will be available to all British Colombians, those closest to it will benefit the most, because it will be accessible and cheaply and easily accessible. And part of the value of this is really trying to make it easy to access for entrepreneurs. So, we're trying to keep the cost down as much as possible, eventually make this self-funding, but also use outside funding sources, whether it's the provincial government and others where possible. So, I wanted to make you aware of it. And the other thing, too, is to ask for a letter of support. You know, it's, as we go through this thing, it would be very nice to show, we have a letter of support coming from the Regional District of Nanaimo, from the Comox First Nation, from the Qualicum First Nation, from the BC Shellfish Growers Association, and we would love to add your support to this, and just really show that the entire region around this is supportive of this initiative.
Excellent. And that was right in that 10 minutes. So, great job. Awesome to see. And we do have quite a few questions generated from your presentation, which was excellent. So, thanks very much. Director Hamir.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for your presentation, Carl. I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if you were aware, probably because of just where you are, of two companies in the Comox Valley that have a seafood connection but are not actually seafood producers. One of them is Tree Island Yogurt. Now, they have, I understand, developed a high-pressure pasteurization system that I believe was also meant to be tested on shellfish as a way of being able to then export that product even farther afield than it goes. So, highly recommend you get in touch with Scott as well, and that's another connection that could come into the innovation center. And then the other one is Edgar Smith from, what's the name of his farm?
Beaver Meadows.
Beaver Meadows. So, I believe he has the contract to harvest the Missola japonica seaweed at Deep Bay.
Okay.
And he is now testing that on cattle to reduce their methane production from, you know, what cattle do.
Yeah.
But there's a connection with Thompson Rivers University in that. So, another potential company to connect with on the, because if you are doing now a seafood center, then on the kelp and the seaweed side. So, my one question is, it has to do around plastics. So, you know, I understand shellfish is both impacted by microplastics, but in itself as an industry is a fair producer of ocean plastics as well. So, I'm wondering if your innovation center is also going to be addressing that and looking at other materials that the industry could use?
That's, when you look at the larger research portfolio that VIU has, we've been one of the first researchers to get into looking at microplastics in terms of its sources, because the sources are multifold. But also then, and this is the more difficult part, is what do they mean? Are microplastics just modern dust, or are they actually toxic? What is the actual human and health impact throughout the food chain and the food web? We have our environmental research group is starting to look into microplastics, but also we coordinate with a number of private companies who are locating into British Columbia. So, we just had meetings last week with one who's developing cheap, reliable sensors to detect microplastics and then be able to type them in terms of where they came from. So, did they come from clothing fabric? Did they come from hard plastics that are degraded, all that sort of stuff? So, definitely, we are moving in that direction. And while I don't think we'll be part of the innovation center, it is part of the science and technology research group at VIU.
And then what about the actual, like, the trays, all of the lines that, you know, the shellfish producers specifically use?
Yeah.
Are you looking at different materials?
Yep. We work with the Bane Sound Ecological Forum, which has been, and the CVRD has been part of those consultations. I think it's been an incredible forum for looking at problems and developing practical solutions, from everything from raising awareness to, in this case, alternative aquaculture practices. And we sit on the Alternative Aquaculture Working Group. So, we're looking at exactly that. Where could we, you know, where are plastics the right thing to use, and where are they the wrong thing to use? Where are they the wrong thing to use? What kind of substances can we substitute for those? So, can we go to aluminum? Will that work for that application, or some other thing? Or can we completely change the practice and get away from, say, the use of trays and move to other things? So, yes, definitely part of that work.
Thank you.
No problem.
And we have Director Arbor. Hang on one sec.
Director Farier, so for Bane Sound. I think we've met before in my prior role on Hornby Allen.
Okay.
In economic development, briefly. So, that's great to see the center, which actually you guys got a good chunk from. Everybody knows the Allen Coastal Economic Trust was one of the funders to establish the center in VIU, so we're really proud to have you in the area. I wish Deep Bay was part of ARA, but it's not. So, I'm sure you've talked with Stuart McLean, and he's aware of your innovation center.
Yes.
And, good. Yeah, I'm really supportive. I want to echo Dr. Hamir. I'm now the coastal rep on shellfish for AVICC. So, I represent all the coastal communities on the working group for DFO, and Chris Pierce came and presented a last meeting around some of the connected research, I guess, that they're doing around impact on the NA of microplastic and things like that. So, my question is, in the region here, we have invested a fair bit of money on seafood innovation over the last number of years, working with the Comox Valley Economic Development Society. And they are currently working on a strategic plan that current, it's in draft form right now, but that would continue to include seafood and looking at innovatitive practices. So, I'm wondering if you've connected with them at all yet?
Yes. I presented at the Innovate 2030 Forum.
Okay, I just missed you.
Six months ago, is it now?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I presented that along with Dennis Jess from the province.
Excellent.
And a number of the other people involved in this space. And that's where I've actually was able to meet quite a few of the businesses that I think will become key parts of this innovation center, because they were there, they were passionate about it, and they definitely have niches that we can't fill.
So, yeah, so even though we're in a different jurisdiction, I mean, if you've got provincial support and all the rest of that, I'd be quite keen to see, beyond a letter of support, which for James' interests perhaps, I would be happy to help draft on behalf of our group and send it back to the board. But if beyond that, there's a need for a more strategic partnership down the road in regards to your efforts and working with SEVeds and/or not, depending where there's overlap or not, I think that's something I'd definitely be receptive to look at.
I would love to keep in touch on that.
Yeah.
Harold, and Director Kettler.
Thanks for the presentation. A couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to go to an oyster production facility with SEVeds, and they were saying, because you were talking earlier about the oyster seed, and they were saying that they currently buy it from the United States and that they couldn't get it within Canada or within BC. So, is that something that you are looking at? And would the Deep Bay facility be the actual production facility for something like that, or you would be looking for a partnership to basically have a business that is creating that seed for the industry here?
A bit of both. So, we are, one of our lines of research right now is looking at why it is so difficult to produce oyster seed within a hatchery in British Columbia, and really getting quite granular about the energy requirements to do it, because we have to heat saltwater here to get it to summer temperatures. And in the process of doing our research, because when we're doing a brood stock program, we produce millions and millions of oysters to get down to the hundreds of thousands that we need for brood stock to represent different traits that are desirable, that we want to work into the brood stock. So, part of our agreement with the BC Shellfish Growers Association to fund our research is that we can sell off the excess seed that we produce to local farmers, and that recovers some of our costs. And we sell it just higher than market rates, so we're not competitive per se. But it is a significant issue. Right now, the industry in British Columbia is importing well over half of its seed, and I'd say around 65% of its seed from Chile, which comes from a fairly biosecure facility, but at the same time, it's a different ocean, it's different microbes, it's a whole different flora and fauna, and we don't necessarily know what we're bringing in. Seed supply from the US is getting more constricted. There's been outbreaks of certain diseases in the San Diego Harbor that are known killers of oysters. So, I expect that the CFI will close up the border to American seed imports in the next year. We are currently producing seed to try and address some of that. I know the province would like us to up our seed production dramatically and start to fill that niche, so we can start to have BC self-sufficient on seed to a certain extent, because right now, if the border gets closed to Chile, 65% of the industry can't get seed, and that will be catastrophic. We're in a position where we could ramp up production dramatically and just produce to fill in that gap, but it would take some staffing changes. So, we're kind of straddling in the middle. A lot of our research right now is really focused around hatchery technology trials, really trying to see if we can break through some of the barriers. Ideally, what we would like to do is get technology and process to a point where we can really get granular and say, okay, well, if you want to start up a hatchery, here's your electricity costs, here's your equipment costs, here's your HR costs, here's kind of the package that you're going to have to deal with if you can get through sort of the permitting around water intake and everything else, because we are licensed. You know, the licensing for shellfish hatchery spans regional district right up to federal. Everybody has a part in licensing, so it does tend to be a little bit difficult to get applications through in that regard. But it's high on our radar. I think right now, last year, we produced about 20 million oyster seed, and that's kind of a drop in the bucket compared to what BC needs.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up that question, because I totally forgot to mention that. It's one of our lines of research.
And we have Director Fresh.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Carl. That was really great. I had a question. You had mentioned that there's some excess production of certain, was, I don't know if it was shellfish or fish, which you said allows a lot more export than perhaps processing and export. Where is the capacity, excess capacity in our system right now?
There isn't a ton. What I see coming up in the future is excess capacity of oyster, hopefully, if we can address some of these issues. Because right now, when you've got 25 to 90% mortality on a farm, there's not a lot going out. If we can, if we made an impact of even say 20 to 25% on mortality, that is literally millions of dollars extra going to the provincial economy. But as that product gets onto the market, eventually we'll hit a saturation point, and whether it's temporary saturation, because we just can't get enough product out, or it becomes a point where, you know, the traditional buyers aren't picking up as much. That's where I hope to see, in the shellfish sector in particular, some more innovation. So, getting into more precooked product, things that can be easily reheated, you know, oysters Rockefeller, but in some sort of quality format.
Okay. Thanks very much.
No problem.
And Director Greif.
Thank you very much. Great work, you know, from a very, very small base amount you're taking on. It's almost like your scope's getting too big. You're going to have to enlarge the facility.
Well, I had hair two years ago.
It's got extra right now.
But Director Hamir brought something forward there about aquatic edible plants, and, you know, the Edgar Smith, and the arrangement he has, I think, with a Japanese firm. And I know when they came before us here, there was some concern, because not a lot is known about the food fish hatching on the beach, and how integral it is to the whole food chain going up, including the resident killer whales and the salmon and what have you. So, you know, I think there's, in this industry now, especially the multi-jurisdictional nature of shellfish, you know, we talk about the tenure being held by the province, but the industry being managed by the FAS. I'm glad to see that there's some focus being put on aquatic plants as well. But as I say, when they came before us, it was just as a courtesy, because we had no jurisdiction. But there was a lot of issues raised around the impact on the intertidal zone, and of course, the needlefish and the smaller food fish industry, that apparently, there's not a hell of a lot known about them. They seem to be part that has not been focused on by the DFO. I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on that. Has your department looked into any of that?
The Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Reserve Institute, which is part of the VIU research group, has been looking at the reproductive cycle of food fish, particularly ones or forage fish, the ones that spawn and lay eggs in the intertidal zone and end up on beaches. So, they have research activities in that area right now. And what they're trying to do, and I don't have a full understanding of their work at the moment, I think at the moment, they're trying to really set a baseline and look at what the densities of eggs are on different beaches, and their work is stretching from Lady Smith up to Bane Sound, and trying to establish a decent baseline to understand at least where things are at right now, and then see where that goes. But also, take a look at where they're finding, what species, what parts of the intertidal zone, to really just get a better idea of what's going on. So, that work is ongoing. The aquatic plants is an interesting sector as well, because in the same way that environmental change affects all aquatic organisms, we know that it's also affecting kelp as well. So, when you look at bulk kelp distribution, we have maps going back to the 1800s, because the British Navy considered bulk kelp a navigational hazard. So, we have quite detailed maps of where bulk kelp beds were in the 1800s. And when we go back and look at those now, the distribution is a fraction of what it used to be. And I think, and there's no, the preliminary research is suggesting that environmental change, changing water temperatures, changing carbon chemistry, is also affecting kelp and its distribution as well. And so, one of our proposals that we have in jointly with North Island College is to look at, in the same way that we're looking at oyster brood stock development, to develop oysters that are more hardy to environmental change, we're looking at kelp brood stock development as well. So, trying to find, because some kelp is doing quite well. So, what is it about that kelp that differentiates it genetically from other ones that haven't done it successfully? Can we take that? Can we work and still keep a diversified population that we can use for reforestation, just to help out? And I know that the Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Reserve Institute has been involved in some kelp reforestation. So, we definitely have work going on in that area. And I think it's key, because when we look at kelp as a product, as a food source, I don't think we've even remotely tapped the potential there. I think there's a lot of exciting stuff to be done with kelp and with algae. So, I'd like to see us involved in more of that going forward, and I certainly would see that as part of a food innovation center.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And Director Arbor.
Just a quick follow-up, just while you're here. So, will the center, will this division for the seafood center include farmed salmon? And the reason, I think you hinted it probably will, the reason I ask is just from a financing perspective. And for those who don't know here, farmed salmon, economic output just dwarfs everything else, you know, the shellfish and everything. So, I'm just wondering if that will be included, and whether you think that will be a big focus, and whether that particular industry would invest in the seafood innovation center.
And it's interesting you bring that up. So, farmed salmon represents 35% of the tonnage, but 65% of the value of seafood in British Columbia.
Yeah.
Yes, they'll be a part of it. Yes, I imagine they'll put money towards it in some factor, but of all the seafood sectors, they need it the least. They don't, of all the seafood sectors, they need it the least.
They need it.
They don't need to innovate. Their product is completely paid for in advance, bought and sold before it's even harvested.
So, what's the impetus for you to have them as a partner, if they don't need it?
Because there's a lot of waste products that come off of farmed salmon. So, there's the guts, heads, there's quite a number of parts of the salmon that aren't currently used, because right now, farmed salmon is very much a fillet market, and then occasional head-off orders to Japan and stuff like that. One of the innovative things we're looking at is all that fish waste, the offal, the things that come out of that, how can that be repurposed in a manner that is either good for human consumption, pet consumption? Where can we get value out of that, rather than having it be a waste product, and having it just go down the drain or into the landfill, literally, or compost? Maybe there's, you know, compost has its value, but perhaps we can derive a higher value product out of that. And that's where I see them being involved initially, because that's a source of food that already exists that isn't being really well utilized. Down the road, though, depending on whether the sector expands, stays the same, how it goes in terms of its licensing and its sort of social acceptance, they too could hit a ceiling where their supply is stripping their demand, and then we'd be looking at value added to their product and what we could do with it. But all the things that we might do around wild Pacific salmon will apply equally to farmed Atlantic, when you look at, you know, steelhead. It's all really the same at the end of the day from a cooking perspective, it's just differences in taste and preparation. So, many of the things that we would develop around, you know, ground fish, halibut, other things would apply equally as well to that.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right. And I don't see any other questions or comments, but a great, great presentation, great to see what's happening. Thanks for, you know, keeping us in the loop. And I didn't really hear any asks of us, unless I missed it.
Letter of support.
Yeah. But other than that, we're...
No. And I, but I think what I'd really like, too, is just as everybody thinks about this and thinks of other partnership opportunities that might be out there, just send me an email. You have my email. Stay in touch. And if anybody would like to come and tour the station to really see the research work we're doing, I'd love to have any of you out, just to take a tour. And we'll take you behind the scenes, show you baby oysters. I think it's really cool. I could talk for hours about this, but everybody has their level of tolerance for baby oysters.
There you go. You seem extremely excited by it, but...
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Oh, actually, Director Hillyon.
I'd like to move that we receive the presentation and provide a letter of support for the innovation center.
All right. And we didn't have anything on the table already. Excellent. So, any questions or comments? See none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Done.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your support.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
All right. And next, we have Diane Hawkins, the CEO and President of the Comox Valley Chamber of Commerce, is going to give us information on the centennial celebration, and then some, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's a privilege to be here to speak to all of you, and I want to recognize that we appreciate the strong collaboration that we have with the regional district staff. We've been working on projects with the regional district for a few years now. You know, we've gone from water to grease traps to sewers and everything in between. And right now, we're doing the Stage Four Water Restriction Survey with the regional district staff, and hosting workshops at the Chamber of Commerce and getting the word out to businesses. And the regional district staff have been very great at receiving input from us in the sense of how could we assist you in going from good to great? And the regional district staff have been very great at receiving input from us in the sense of how could we assist you in, in going from good to great? And we appreciate the collaboration. I think it's, it's a testament to how, how well-run the regional district is, and we really appreciate it. So thank you for that. Before I talk about the Centennial, I wanted to let you know that although we are no longer the Visitor Centre, many people in the world and our own community still think that we are. And so, other than sending people away and having them discouraged and disappointed that they have to go back to where they came from, we've come up with some innovative ways to keep them in the Comox Valley, because it's really about exploring our community and keeping people here. And one of the things that we've realized is that there was our maps. Everyone liked the Chamber of Commerce and search and rescue maps. And so everywhere we turned, the realtors, the delivery trucks, the contractors, right? They were just, we need this map. And so we had let the map just, you know, we sold them all and said, that's it, you know, close the doors. And then realized that maybe we should go back to what we were doing in the first place. And so what we've done is this year, we have produced, or I guess, yeah, early this year, we have produced a 2019 Comox Valley map. All the Comox, Courtney and Cumberland are on here, the street maps. On the other side is rural. So it goes all the way from Oyster River to Fanny Bay, which is the Comox Valley. And we've been selling them like crazy, and so I wanted to let you know that, so that you can send people to the Chamber. There's other organizations that also have them for sale, such as the museum. The Visitor Centre's been buying them by the box from us. So, so there's collaborative work going on there as well. So I just wanted to let you know. So we're really excited. We're, we're also raising funds for ground search and rescue. And I don't know, I don't think anyone here was at the, our barbecue at the fishing game. But they rescued some hikers off Mount Albert Edward, I think. And in the middle of our barbecue, it was like we planned it, they all landed. The helicopter came four times, dropping people. And we thought, isn't this great? Because this is something that we help support as a Chamber. And yeah, so we're really excited to do this again. So they're only $5, tax included, so people seemed pretty happy about that, and we are too. So 2019 marks the 100th anniversary of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are going to honor our longstanding members. So we have members from 100 years, which is the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce, all the way to, you know, people that joined yesterday. Last year, we had 69 businesses join the Chamber of Commerce. We're really pleased with the progress that we've experienced. We did see a drop of 250 members when we lost, or we gave the visitor, gave up the visitor services in the Comox Valley. We projected that in our budget, and so we've adjusted. And we are a strong but mighty team on a very small budget. We have a shoestring budget, but it works. We're making it work for our community. The Chamber's certificate of incorporation is sitting in our board office, our boardroom. If you ever want to have a look at it, it's quite something. The seal is there. It's the incorporation of us as a Board of Trade in, in 1919. There are names on there, such as Anderton, Willemar, McPhee, Hereford and Idians, a few to name. And we all know that...
What?
Pardon?
No Greaves? Why?
There might be. I just was, there was people in the boardroom, Edwin, and these are the ones I could remember.
And could read if this is...
Yes, the, the writing has changed significantly over the years. I actually have the very first Chamber dues, the Board of Trade dues book, because they started unofficially in 1913. So I still have the dues book where people signed in, in fountain pen, and the dues were $8. So I still have that book in the Chamber office. Yeah, so it's quite cool. The, and the Chamber, whoops. I'm at that age where I have to wear glasses, so... We would like to, we would like to ask the Comox Valley Regional District to acknowledge the, the work and effort that the Chamber has put into our community over the last 100 years. We're putting out a Centennial booklet. We're not asking for money, just so that you know. We're putting out a Centennial booklet, and we're going to be giving copies to the museum, of course. The museum's worked quite closely with us to, to look for research on the Chamber of Commerce right back from 1913. We've been dancing through the decades since, since our kickoff at our Chamber Awards, which started off with a 1919 theme, a Great Gatsby, which was a ton of fun for those of you that were there. And so we would, we would love to have a letter of accommodation or recognition, recognition from the board and, and the Chair of the Regional District to, to, to make part of our commemorative year, if you could find it, to do so. And as well, we would like to invite you to our Chamber Centennial Celebration that we're holding at the Native Suns Hall. We have the time benders coming to dance the night away all through the decades. So for some of you that know, may not know who they are, they actually play music right through the decades and they do costume changes. So we wanted to have a big party and celebrate our community, and we have tickets on sale for that. You need to buy tickets for that event. But at the same time, in the afternoon at the museum, we'll be hosting our past chairs through the decades that we've had, as well as long-term Chamber members. And we would like to extend an invitation to dignitaries such as yourselves to come and help us recognize people that have poured into our community and made it how great it is today. And so that's our ask as a Chamber of Commerce, and we really thank you for your support again. And we like working with the Regional District and all of you, and some of you will hear me again, because only I'm also going to Comox, Cumberland and, and Courtney. So, but thank you so much.
Fantastic. And, and two things. One, I think the letter is, is totally easy, a proclamation as Chair of the Regional District and as, and at the city, totally easy. And on the event, is it the 28th of September? So just for people to put in your calendars.
I brought some invitations.
Oh, look at that.
So these are just like rack cards, just to let you know what's happening.
Fantastic. That's awesome.
So I can leave those. Who should I leave those with? Should I just put them on? Thank you.
There you go. Director Arbor.
Thank you for the presentation. You're invited to the Electoral Area Services Committee, too. Very exciting. It's like Cumberland, Comox, Courtney. Bring your pillow.
I can do that.
No, thank you. And it's pretty amazing when you think about it, 1919 then is the Centennial. So it started the year after the First World War. That's pretty, imagine the spirit and vibe at the time around the Comox Valley must have been something. Your family was there.
Edwin might have been here.
Yeah, Edwin. So because I'm new, I can often ask the questions where everybody will go, what? Did he just ask that? So you, you obviously are doing some great work around visitor services, and you specifically said you didn't want money. We give a lot of money for visitor services and marketing in the region. There's never been consideration of contracts with the Chamber of Commerce around some of those services?
So to give you some background, we, for 55 years, the Chamber of Commerce held the contract for visitor services in the Comox Valley. And in 2012, that contract was awarded to Economic Development to, to run the new Visitor Centre, which is on the inland highway on the connector. Yeah, okay. So we have never, we have never come back to the municipality or the regional district to ask for funds to help us in terms of the seaside route or people that come from the airport. Just because we, I mean, I, to be honest, I wasn't sure if there would be an opportunity to do that. And I also don't, we're about, we want to establish and continue collaboration. And so our, my heart would never be to, to step on anyone's toes or, you know, it'd need to be something that was collaborative and agreed upon with the organization that's been given the, you know, with the economic development.
And was that the case in 2012? Was that through, you guys willingly left the service, or was there...
Edwin, do you want to talk about this?
No, no, well, the reason why I'm asking is where, it is, it is a free society.
Yes.
And we are currently contemplating a new five-year contract around a lot of services. So I'm wondering if there's another bidder or somebody who would have an interest in those types of services. I think it's just good public management to think about options. And I'm just wondering if your organization is happy to be out of that field, if you left it happily in 2012. I just don't have the background.
Okay. I wouldn't use the word happy. I think that we're very adaptive at the Chamber, and so we embraced the change and made a decision to support and, and continue our relationship with Economic Development and find ways to collaborate in other areas with Economic Development. But I wouldn't say that we were necessarily happy. We went from a team of nine staff to a team right now of three full-time and one part-time employee. And as all of you know, when your team, team changes so drastically, it really does affect, you know, your culture, and you need to rebuild the culture. I think that we do, I know that we do a really great job with the things that we do for the community. I was born and raised here. I love the Comox Valley. My grandfather came here on a farm permit in 1926, and I've really, I'm really proud to, to live in this community. So if there was opportunities that presented themselves for the Chamber of Commerce to further community services or find ways for us to collaborate with, with the municipalities or the regional district, of course, we would be very happy to do that. We would be honored to do that.
Thank you. Well, I want to congratulate you on 100 years. That's pretty awesome.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll try to make it on September 20th, so I can learn more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I don't see any other questions or comments at this point, but thanks so much for your presentation today. And like I said, James has already written it down, but yeah, doing up a letter and a proclamation, et cetera, is not a problem whatsoever, and we'll do our best.
Do you know what, Chair? I just, I might have missed it, but you said, I thought you said the 28th?
Yes.
And I just wanted to confirm what time the dignitaries arrived for this earlier afternoon thing? Or maybe you're not sure yet, but you'll send us an invitation, maybe?
I, yeah, I, I'm not sure, like, here standing in this moment.
Yeah, yeah, no. And I was just looking. I don't have anything on that day yet, so...
Yes.
I've earmarked it, so I'll look forward to seeing the invitation.
And I think that the staff did send invitations out, but I can definitely ask for them to go out again. And it is in, I think it's around 3:00 in the afternoon. It's 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, so that we can kind of try, give people an opportunity to kind of refresh and then transition into the, into the party. Yes. And because the party, we won't be serving appetizers or food or anything like that, more, more like snacks and things. So we want to be really aware that people need a chance to get away and grab something to eat downtown.
Awesome. And that's at the Native Suns as well.
Yes, that's at the Native Suns, and our honorary presentation will be done at the museum.
Will be done at the museum. Wonderful.
Because that is invitation only. And the Chamber's picking up the tab for that, because CIBC was very gracious to give us a good-sized sponsorship, so that they could be a year-long sponsor for us. So we appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And Director Hillian.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if you need a resolution in regards to the proclamation?
Excuse me, through the Chair, the, we have a bylaw that actually delegates the authority to the Chair to, to approve proclamations. A letter of support from the Committee of the Whole for the work of the Chamber would be appropriate, though.
Well, I'll move that the Committee of the Whole provide a letter of support for the work of the Chamber on its 100th anniversary. And I'll move receipt and a letter of support.
Excellent. I don't see any questions or comments on that. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
It's nice to see all of you.
All right. And next, we have a management report. Excellent. Are there any questions on the extensive management report that we have here? See no questions. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. And a grant status report? Excellent. Any questions on the grant status? And we have quite a few. Director Fresh.
Yeah, well, I was just going through it last night and just amazed at not only the dollar amounts, but how many there were. And I guess my question is, is this a normal amount of grants to be flowing through the regional district? Or, you know, obviously, they span many years, but...
I could certainly ask Beth Dunlop to kind of come up and give a more specific answer. I think that we're, we're looking, we look for grant opportunities every chance we get. And so there are oftentimes many that are either under consideration or being applied for, or we've received. And so this is a great report to keep you updated on, on the status of all those. Are we at an exceptionally busy time with our grant applications?
Yes. It does seem very busy. It does seem very busy. There are a lot more applications going out, a lot more opportunities are out there. And we are finding in finance, we are spending an awful lot of time tracking the grants. It does seem to be a bit overwhelming. So...
Well, good luck with it, but we're, we're very happy.
Yeah, yeah, we are too, but yeah, it is, it is a lot of work.
All right. Thanks very much.
Excellent.
Just hang out, just in case.
There are more questions. Director Arbor.
Yeah, it's great. And hopefully, the same amount going through in the municipalities, because many of those grants are related to the rural areas. One that seemed, and that's just a question because it's here today, that may be one that we've lost track of or had, had lost track of. What about the boat ramp on Hornby? Did we get decline on that? I didn't see it on, anywhere on the list. Maybe that's not a question. Doug is not here today. Do you know the one I referred to, Beth, or...
I, I know. I'm not sure Jennifer would.
Yeah. So maybe I can save my question for offline?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Excellent. And that was your only question?
Yeah.
All right. And Director Kettler.
Yeah, I have two questions. So on Penex A with the list of the grants, there's the one from the Ministry of Forests for $37,500. It's for the enforcement of the invasive plants, noxious weeds. We had just ended, voted to terminate a service that had to do with that. So I was just wondering, under what bylaw that was, that money is being allocated?
Okay, I can help with this. James might need to, to chime in. So the service that was being discontinued was a pesticide awareness service, which was education only. It wasn't an enforcement or regulation service of any sort. Okay. And the, the grant that we received now is basically for weed control and would be under our weed control service.
Okay. And so my second question, it's actually on the same page. It's about the UBCM Child Care Planning Program. It's the $75,000, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that Cumberland is not on the list here. It says Partnership of Courtney, Comox and the CVRD. So yeah, I had, that was, that was one of the issues where I had gone back to council and gotten them to change their mind about doing this as a regional service. And so now they're not on this, they're not listed here, even though we did come back and say that we wanted to be part of the service. So that would be very bad if, if they were to hear that now we've been dropped off again.
Yeah, I don't know if that information came back to staff, that Cumberland agreed to participate. I know there is still collaboration between the contractor that's been engaged with, we understood there was a contractor engaged for Cumberland as well. So I'll take that back.
Okay, yeah, because the letter did come back saying that we did want to participate. So yeah, that's, that's pretty important to us. If that didn't go through, then, then it's, yeah, a problem.
All right.
We'll be sure to double-check that.
Thank you.
And update this report as needed.
Fair enough. And Director Greve.
Under the denied grants, I guess it was, I'd have to mention this, it's a bit of a downer, but it doesn't really mention the $15 million that we have, had to give back in grant funding for the South Sewer Project because it failed a referendum. And as such, we had lined up, I think, a total of $28 million, all in all, with low-interest loans and grant funding, including $5 million from First Nation, but it all dissolved. And that's gone back to UBCM now, but I don't know if it's actually recorded in this, in this report.
No, it would have dropped off the report. I think it was on the last quarterly report. And just with the explanation that, you know, the referendum had failed and we had been keeping it on, hoping for... That's right. And so it has dropped off now.
And the, the Third Well Project, it was, that would be part of this organization because it is the...
And it, that is on the list.
The Black People's Day.
Yes.
And that pedestal pending, of course, it may be dropping.
Thanks very much. Money lost. All right. I do not see any further questions or comments. So see none. All those in favor? Any opposed? And there's no recommendations for that. So let's get back into the Electoral Area B, Participation on Sewage Commission. So let's get back into the Electoral Area B Participation on Sewage Commission. Excellent. And I'll pass over to staff.
Thanks. And so I've got just a few statements to make on the next three reports, actually. So just some synopsis statements here to make. So the Board will remember on its last board meeting that we received a delegation from Jenny Steele of the Curtis Road Residents Association with a request to amend the bylaw. Bylaw number 650, that's the Sewage Commission bylaw. The Sewage Commission bylaw and bylaw 2541, which is the Service Establishing bylaw, make up the governance framework and operation administration framework for the sewer service. Membership and voting entitlements about regional district services are most commonly based on service participation and population or contribution levels. But provincial legislation does not preclude customized governance arrangements for operating The Commission has the independent authority to enact policy and could do so for non-voting or observer status capacity. But appointments that are intended to be ongoing lasting arrangements should be done through an amendment to bylaw 650. The, this report is presented based on the Board's decision last month to ask for such a report. As you can see, the recommendation is to refer this matter to the Sewage Commission for its deliberation and to express to the Commission that this Board would intend to honor any such recommendations that would be coming forward. So, Mr. Chair, happy to go into any more detail if you would like. The staff report is attached and contains much more detail than that, but open for any questions you may have.
All right, thanks very much. And we do have some questions. Director Hamir?
Thank you. And I think everybody was here last month when the Curtis Road Residents Association made their presentation. And we have the staff report. I would just like the members of the Board to consider not sending this back to the Sewage Commission, because the Sewage Commission has had a delegation from the same group already. So they're well aware of the ask. And what I'm asking, you know, on behalf of the residents of Area B, is for a permanent change to the makeup of the committee. Seeing as the actual sewage treatment plant resides in Area B and that much of the conveyance happens into, or comes through Area B, that there will always be ongoing issues or, not issues, but concerns that residents might have about the operation and conveyance. And without a seat at the table, it's very difficult for, you know, constituents to have a voice that is also a voice that can respond to some of the comments that happen around the table. When you come as a delegation, it's very much a one-way sort of situation. You can speak and then you're asked to step down and then conversation happens without your input. And so not having representation at the Sewage Commission has become quite a problem in terms of the ongoing, and I'm not just talking about the current odor issues. These issues have been obviously going on since the 80s and before. So I think this is an issue that was maybe overlooked when the Sewage Commission was first established, in that no kind of compensation or recognition of Area B was given. And so what I'm asking is for kind of a righting of a wrong that happened a long time ago. And moving forward, you know, a better way for residents of Area B to be represented and to have a voice at the table.
And Director Arbor?
Is there others in the line?
Well, you're next.
I'm next.
All right. Well, bad news is you're still next. Director Frisch has jumped in to save you.
No worries. Yeah, thanks, Chair. I guess I've not seen a lot of lights on, or you're not seeing a lot of lights on, but, you know, I think that now that it's come to the Board and we've had this report back as the Chair of the Sewage Commission, I'm happy to hear from any other members who don't generally sit on our Sewage Commission. If you have any insight for us, happy to take it. And this was obviously a difficult situation and a difficult decision to make, because on the Sewage Commission, we're balancing all the interests of our constituents and the needs of the service. And while we do look at the needs of the people of Area B, especially in the area of the sewage treatment plant, I would agree that, you know, because we're not elected by them, maybe we're missing a piece of influence that we would normally have about our service that we do get from our constituents. But by the same token, the people of that area are missing a lot of insight that would normally come from the people who are paying for the service and using it. So it's a double-edged sword. So we've made a decision at the Sewage Commission. I don't see us necessarily reconsidering it, but we are, I think we are open to hearing from this Board. And of course, we're going to continue to hear from the residents around the Sewage Commission and we are dedicated to working very hard to solving the issues that have gone on there for the last 30 years.
Thanks, Director Frisch. And I guess one of the questions that I might have, having been on the Sewage Commission for the past four years, but not currently, is we did have representation from Area B. So unfortunately, I'm not on the Sewer Commission, so I don't, I'm not really sure what the arguments were against having that at this point. And I don't know if there's anybody here that voted against it that might be able to speak to the reasoning behind that that might help with this discussion. And I'll pass it over to Director Swift.
Okay. I think you will.
If you can get the microphone.
Yeah. Well... Thank you. I was one of the people that was not in favor of this. I believe as a Commission, we have heard the residents and we're sympathetic to their issues of odor that they're experiencing. As evidence of this, I think five out of six of the items on the management report dealt with their issues in one form or another. So I think that we're really working hard as a Commission, and I'm not sure another representative would be able to do anything more with that. I don't believe that the best practice would indicate that we need to change our governance to accommodate this group. They're a relatively small group. And I don't think they need a representative to voice their concerns. I think it's problematic, especially when they don't contribute financially. It creates an imbalance on the Commission, both in allegiance and obligation. And it doesn't make good governance sense. The pay-to-play model is there to make the members accountable to the taxpayer, as Area B would not have the same type of accountability. I also believe that the members of the Commission need to see the big picture and appreciate the overall issues of the sewage system. We have some big issues. The Willamar Bluffs, the conveyancing, the capacity issues that we're faced with, the possibility of taking on some Area A residents. The odor issues are just one part of the overall Commission. The Curtis Road represents about 85 people. Their concerns are real. We have been and will continue to work towards solutions. I think as a Commission, we know that. I don't think we need to change our governance model to consider and work at resolving their concerns. One suggestion that I thought we might consider is, rather than changing our governance, is that we appoint a member of the current Commission to liaison with that group instead of bringing somebody else on. So, and I guess my other point is that we're having a utilities governance session that we are expecting to hear from in the fall. And I think it would, we would be wise to delay a decision until we at least hear from them.
And just for clarification, so you're saying change from what's been in the past? So would this have been a voting position? Because I think when Rod Nichol was on, it was just as advisory. Was this...
Well, originally, the residents had asked for a voting position. And the resolution that was defeated was for a non-voting position.
Okay.
So somewhere in between a non-voting and a voting position.
Fair enough. No, I just wanted to confirm. Okay, fair enough. And we do have lots and lots of lights now. I'm going to pass it over to Director Grant.
Sure. Well, yeah, you asked for, those of us that voted against, and I was again one of them, I think it's important to also know that we at the Town, myself, Russ and Maureen, met with the Curtis Road Group yesterday and sat down and had a good meeting. And I think what we all came out of it with was that we all want to fix this odor problem with a reasonable solution. I think that was clear. I don't think that this is a us versus them kind of thing. You know, having had Rod sit on the table before and being one of the guys that got all the arrows and knives in his back over what happened there, it certainly did not make it smoother. It in fact made it worse. It didn't speed up the process. It made it longer and it wasn't more cost-effective. So in the long run, I don't think it really worked. One of the problems that we ran into with that was that the rep, although non-voting, was not bound by fact or anything. He could just stand up and say what he pleased and played right to the press and to Blogger George, and away it went. And then we started having to deal with all of the issues that weren't actually, in my opinion, not real issues, but the ones that they were, the red herrings that were being thrown out. And I think that it really caused more problems than it actually solved. So we did meet yesterday. I guess the other thing about that is it all works really well and it sounds really nice, right up until we disagree on something. And that's when the rubber really hits the road. And so I think you have to be, sort of look a little farther down the road on this to see where the problems lie. We did leave the meeting yesterday. And, you know, I did ask them, I said, "If you can find a solution that doesn't involve putting a member on the Board, either voting or non, we'd be certainly open to it." And Maureen's idea of a liaison we brought up, I think it was met with, I don't know. I mean, they said they'd think about it. I don't think they were thrilled with the idea by any stretch, I won't say that. But it's a means for them to get communication to the Board, from the Board, and to be, and for us to hear their concerns. So I think that if there's a compromise, we would certainly be open to it. But I don't think our mind has changed in any way on having someone on that Board, voting nor non-voting.
And Director Kettler?
Well, I just want to read out a part of the report that I thought, well, it made the most sense to me. And it says, "While membership and voting entitlements respecting regional district services are most commonly based on service participation and population/contribution levels, provincial legislation does not preclude customized governance arrangements for operating such services. In fact, the Local Government Act specifically enables such arrangement for bodies established for the administration and operation of services. And this is reflected in the current makeup of both the Sports Commission and the Sewage Commission, in which, in addition to formal participation areas, School District 71 and the Department of National Defense respectively provide membership and voting rights based on their current and past contributions to those services." And I think, in all fairness, having a voice at the table of people that are affected by the service can only lead to better decision-making. And I don't really understand why the non-voting resolution that was put forward was defeated. Just having input from people who obviously have a vested interest and, I think, all in all, have a common goal can't be a bad thing.
All right, thanks. And Director Greif?
If this holy chairness would grant me permission to give a little historic background. I know how much you enjoy those sessions.
Absolutely. 100-year anniversary. We were just talking about that.
Minister of the Day, Ada Chong, in her letter, called the Ada Chong Letter, of course, directed the municipalities to relax policies and support services outside their boundaries based on need and public health concerns. Now, during our OCP, Rural OCP process, it was established that there are between 7,000, 8,000 residents in the settlement expansion area contiguous to the municipal boundaries within a kilometer of a pipe, of a sewer pipe that lacks sewer, but have that close proximity. Now, we talked about the review we're going to do on services in the Comox Valley and the idea of a service commission for water and sewer. Now, I think that's the appropriate place to have this discussion. But, you know, I think that the broader issue here is the valley's growing and the future of liquid waste management is not going to be confined just to the two participants like it was back in 1979 when it was first imagined. You know, we have to move beyond that. I think personally, I hate to say this for Director Hamir, but if you don't pay, you don't play. I think that's a really good principle. At one time, the municipalities in the Comox Valley wanted to have some input into planning in the electoral areas. This is before the regional growth strategy. They were concerned about development on the periphery. And I think the Council of the Day wanted to have some say in our planning process. And the director for Area C was Cal Kelly at the time, and he flatly refused. He says, "You know, you're not paying for the service. It's not right that only the people that actually pay into the service should actually vote on the service. So I'm not in support of a voting member." However, in light of just fairness, I do think that in issues that pertain directly to a director, for instance, you know, sewer mains getting pushed through Idian's Way and stuff like that, or in this case, the actual plant being located outside the municipal boundaries, just, it'd be a courtesy to be able to actually participate just as a non-voting member. So that I could see, perhaps on that basis alone, that would be probably good. But it doesn't hide the fact that we've got to really come into the 21st century here. We've got, we've got a growing population. Much of it is very, very close to services. But I think the RGS was written in a different time, and it imagined that the municipalities would eventually take in these areas into their boundaries. And through that process of annexation, services would be magically provided. Well, I don't think, I don't see any staff here from Comox or Courtney, but I think that whole concept of expanding their boundaries is kind of a dead issue these days. I don't see it going ahead. It's too expensive and too much work. So obviously, we're looking at, you know, service, pay for service, the satisfactory service agreement clause in the regional growth strategy. But this is a discussion beyond what we're talking here, and I won't belabor anybody else with any more of this historic insight. But I don't support it categorically on the fact that you've got to pay to play. It works both ways.
And Director Arbor?
Is there still a queue? Can I go over to the back?
Yeah, no, you're back at the front now.
Back at the front. Just a quick question to staff. So on the Water Committee, we have the weighted vote. Is it by volume of water or is it by number of residents or number of homes participating?
Consumption.
Consumption.
It's based on consumption. So it's a previous consumption.
It's by consumption. So this is complicated, because at the last meeting, we have the Chair of the Sewage, which is how we got here today. We got the Chair of the Sewage Commission who asked us to overrule a decision of the Sewage Commission and brought it back. And now we defer it back to staff and then we get this report. We hear that option one is probably not really an option, because we just heard from the Chair that if we refer it back to the Sewage Commission, there doesn't seem to be appetite or intent to reopen it. Did I hear that correctly? So it looks like option one, for me, it'd just be sending it back for no reason. Option four, to direct staff to provide additional information concerning this topic. I think we all have our heads around what is going on and the pros and cons of both arguments. Direct staff to bring forward an amendment to buy... Direct staff to bring forward an amendment to bylaw number 650 to add the electoral area B director as a voting or non-voting member. This, as a member of Sewage Commission, maybe it was Director Grant, at their meeting, a couple of meetings ago, said that could set a really bad precedent for the rest of our committees in terms of how we operate, to overrule a commission, in my opinion, especially in a matter that was decided democratically at that board. So it's problematic. And provide no direction at this time and refer this as part of utilities governance study is the one I'm leaning on right now, because that seems to make sense. And it seems to have the less risk in terms of damaging relationship and, but at the same time, what I would say is, on the principle of it, I do tend to agree with the Director Hamir's arguments that were put forward. I think you have a service where there's clearly a critical part of infrastructure that is in another jurisdiction. We're having a hard time finding other places in BC where that exists. In terms of the weighted vote, I think there would be ways to do it so that on all financial matters and all that, that that vote would be almost meaningless. I sit on the Water Committee, I represent 100 homes. Now, it does sound like there's a personality thing where a representative kind of poisoned the well for some members of the commission, you had a bad experience with having a non-voting member at the table, but I would highlight the cases where you do have minor players at the table, and hopefully our voices, such as on the Water Committee, contribute to the betterment and better decisions for that particular commission. I represent 100 homes on Water, and I get a voice and I get to speak on every issue, right? You guys represent a lot more homes. So I would say that from a governance perspective, it's a stakeholder that I think is, especially in this case where the plant is located in that jurisdiction, philosophically, I see value, and my recommendation would be to admit that person, to put in place some kind of weighted vote, like we have the Water, so that on those types of decisions, basically the rest of the table will carry the day every single day, but at least there's representation. So, but my conclusion is I would actually opt for number three, because there's many considerations, and there is a governance study going on, unless the rest of the board felt that they wanted to overrule the Switch Commission today. And for that, I would probably vote, you know, if, especially if Comox voted in favor of that, I would probably come on board. But I think there's a need to not kick it back to the Switch Commission, because it will die there. And they're asking for help from our board to resolve this, and I think we need to provide some guidance.
All right, thanks. And Director Hillyon?
Thank you, Chair. So just to be clear, I am on record as supporting inclusion of the Area B rep on these matters with voice but no vote. And that was a resolution that was defeated at the Sewage Commission. I did have a question of staff with relation to the report and the options that were presented. But before I ask that question, I just want to say that I do hear a glimmer of compromise in the discussion that the Comox people had with the residents, where there seemed to be some willingness to set up a liaison role. To me, that's not that far from the resolution that was defeated, and so maybe further discussion of this matter at the Sewage Commission is not in fact a closed issue. There may in fact still be room for some type of compromise. And in my view, it's important to find a compromise that doesn't pit one community's interests against another's. This was a tie vote essentially at the Sewage Commission, so I think we all know the dynamics of that and how it is potentially divisive. So, again, I would probably be in favor of going back to the Sewage Commission for some further discussion on the possibility of compromise. The question I want to ask, though, is the options suggest either referring the matter back to the Sewage Commission for further consideration of a potential recommendation concerning an amendment to the bylaw. Now, the motion that was made before, I believe, was made with the understanding that the Sewage Commission could in fact invite someone to take part without the bylaw being amended. And I think I read somewhere in the report that that is not recommended, and I just want to get clear about that.
Sure. The best practice, the recommendation that we've had in discussions with ministry staff and understanding legislation, is that such amendments, such appointments, when they are meant for a longstanding nature, be done by bylaw. The best practice would be to make those amendments by bylaw, as opposed to a policy decision, which has less certainty, has less, I suppose it has more authenticity when it's done by bylaw. It actually defines the governance framework for a sewage commission in that case.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The only problem I have with that is that we do have a governance study that's coming. And my thought was that we were looking at an interim measure until that governance study is in fact completed. And I believe that is what the resolution was, that the Area B representative be appointed with voice but no vote as an interim measure until we see the results of the governance study. And to me, that preserves the principle that, you know, you only get vote if you're paying into the service. It acknowledges the legitimate interests of the residents of the Curtis Road area and the concerns that they have, which have taken up the vast majority of the commission's time over this past nine months or so that I've been involved. And I think essentially, we're also looking at a democratic principle here, that if your interests are impacted, you should have some voice in the decisions that are being taken. So, to me, that would still be the compromise, that there be an inclusion of the Area B representative with voice but no vote. Now, I'm willing to listen to the arguments about whether or not an existing member of the Sewage Commission being appointed as a liaison with the Curtis Road area residents, whether or not that's something that could work. If it wasn't something that the area residents were willing to accept, you know, it's obviously problematic. But, you know, I do feel that it's something that is worthy of debate. And I guess if I'm willing to listen to that, I would hope that the Comox directors would be willing to reconsider the possibility of a vote, a voice but no vote inclusion, again, as an interim measure until we see the results of the governance study, which may in fact make all of this academic. So, those are my views, and I would be inclined to support the staff recommendation that let's go back to the Sewage Commission.
Thanks for your comments. And I think, you know, I'll maybe put a couple of comments, there are still some more lights on, but I'll just comment, because I don't sit on the Sewage Commission, but I did for four years, as well as Water. And my recollection might differ a bit with maybe Director Grant's, where having Director Nichol at the time provide that voice and ask questions that some of us might not ask, particularly because, and I just look at, when I was a councillor, basically, if I was to be that representative to represent them, it'd be like being another councillor when he was already there doing that job. So it seems a bit redundant to try to have more people, like when we talk, I think the Director Grant talked about speed, but when you already have that person there, I think it worked relatively effectively. And then going back to the metric of, you know, is speed really the metric that we want to be measuring ourselves by, or is it making good decisions? And I'll always choose making good decisions over speed, just because of the long-term effects that that have. And, you know, I think, you know, again, if we go back to the Water Committee, although it wasn't a voting member, again, we were able to get First Nations representation there so that their needs and concerns could be considered. And I would say, you know, one of the things about this utilities governance study that I'm very interested in is how do we integrate Comox, First Nation even further beyond just the Water, but there's obviously sewer, there's other things that they can be part of. So, I mean, just based on my experience and frankly, my, you know, my support over the last four years, even though I'm not part of it right now, I do see certainly that value there, especially as Director Hillyon has pointed out and a few others, I think that this may just be interim anyways until we get this utilities governance study done. But even if that utilities governance study, that's not a definitive, that's going to be giving options. And so we may run ourselves up against some of these same issues. And I think had we done it as a bylaw, like if we said, "Look, this is something that needs to have the bylaw, actually the terms of reference really adjusted," we wouldn't be having this conversation now. If we said, "If an area is going to be impacted, then they get at least a voice at the table." And, you know, again, we can't go back and change things, but that's my input anyways from my experience when we went through that. Director Hamir?
Thank you. And I take those comments to heart, Chair Wells, because I think that's pretty much what I'm asking for is just the, you know, to represent those that are directly impacted. I just wanted to speak to a couple of the comments that were raised. The idea of having one of the other Sewage Commission members be a liaison, I just want you to maybe contemplate how that would work in practice, because you're representing your own constituents, and then on top of that, you're then going to represent Area B constituents. And as Director Grant mentioned, you know, it's all fine until there's a conflict. And then how do you represent that conflict at the table? Because what hat are you wearing? And there will obviously be a conflict of interest there, because who you represent, who voted you in is going to be, you know, who you represent here. So, although I think it would be nice in practice, I don't think it would work, especially if there is an issue in terms of, for example, an odor issue or a pipeline issue that has a cost that, you know, I would need to advocate for the residents who are impacted, but for you, you know, cost is an issue. So, again, thinking about how that would work in practice, I don't think it would, not to the full extent that having a separate voice at the table. And, you know, I understand it might require asking questions, and as Chair Wells mentioned, slowing things down a bit, but I think it would be, it would create a better overall outcome just to hear those comments from a separate individual rather than you having one hat on and then saying, "Okay, now I'm representing Area B." So just consider that. And I am sort of, I'm saddened to hear that there was a bit of a poisoning of the well from the previous representative, because, you know, I would hope that going forward, we all, you know, have some kind of impact through this sewage system, whether it be in your backyard or you are actually a user. And having, just because Area B doesn't pay, it doesn't mean we don't incur costs. And that cost is often environmental, mental, social, and for some members of Area B, financial because of the cost of, you know, the impact on their property values. So, again, just wanting to possibly broaden what our concept of paying is. And then lastly, you know, I know we're kind of relying on this utilities governance study to provide us with some maybe miracle answer to our questions, but I kind of, I think we're coming down to two things. We either have an Area B member at the table or we don't. So I don't know if the governance study would, you know, provide you with any more options other than that. Now, hearing some of the concerns at the table around the voting and having, you know, not having someone who pays into the system, having a voting right, I'm willing to compromise and have a non-voting seat. So, if that makes things more palatable to folks at this table, to perhaps go for option two, to direct staff to bring forward an amendment to bylaw 650 for a specific non-voting member from Area B.
Thanks. And Director Arbor, I did see your light come on, but almost everybody else is against, is ahead of you, so, not against you, but ahead of you, sorry.
Maybe against you.
Well, Director Grant, I'll let you go first.
Oh, thank you. So I just wanted to answer for some of the comments that I've heard. And Director Greve's mentioned boundary extensions. Currently, Comox is in the midst of two of them. So, you know, I guess that goes, flies in the face of what he said, but the issue, one of the issues that we have, and I brought this up with the Curtis Road people, is that this really becomes a precursor to taking our services out beyond our boundaries. And that becomes really problematic, and it's a whole different issue for us. It's something that we strongly oppose doing. And the reason we do that is because we pay for a lot of services within our community that the regional district does not. And the minute that the services go out, we will never see them come and pay for the services that they're currently using. Now, I know Edwin will say that's old-fashioned and all of that, but it's still the case. And we feel very strongly about that, and I brought this up with the Curtis Road people yesterday, and so interesting that you brought that up today. The other thing is that we have very little power in the Town of Comox on most of the boards. As a matter of fact, we find it increasingly frustrating these days. And the fact that Director Arbor sits on the Water Board with 100 people is actually one of the problematic issues. You know, nothing against him, it's just that it's a system that costs hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, and you've got 100 people on it. And having that say, that's another issue that we have. And it's one of the reasons why I actually brought up to have this governance study put in place, so we could try and find a more fair way to deal with this. It seems very unfair, the way that, for our community, with the way that this is, the way that these committees have been going, and it's becoming increasingly more frustrating for us. The liaison position, I thought, was a fairly good idea, and as a matter of fact, Doug, we put your name up as the guy that might be a good one. So, I thought I'd throw that out there. But, you know, and then with regards to Director Wells's comments, you know, you sat on the Sewer Commission for four years through that whole Crowdon Beach thing, but you sat dead silent on the issue. So I don't think that you actually got to feel the true fun and games of it all as it came out. And it carried through to the election, and it carried through to after the election. And, you know, it's just an experience that, I got pretty thick skin, but I can tell you that it did not work for anybody. I don't know what board you were sitting in on, but it sure wasn't working for me, so...
Oh, fair enough. But I would caution you about commenting on me being silent on things that I obviously was not silent on. And in fact, I was a big supporter of the governance study as well, as was Director Nichol, and in fact, that was probably his biggest thing that he fought for on the last one. But again, I don't think this is a personal thing. To me, this is about the position. It's about the actual position, not the person, and I think that's one of the things I want to be clear on. But again, and it's not just that, you can look at things that I've done on pretty much any board, that is one of the things that I do, have tried to do, but I do take exception to being told that I've been silent on anything. I would look around this board and I would ask anybody how quiet I am, and I will expect the answer will probably be not very. Director Frisch?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So I just want to clear up two points. One was a point made by Director Arbor. It sounded like the commission wanted this issue to come to the board, and that's not at all the case. It came to the board because the delegation brought it to the board. And so, in my point of view, we had made a decision, and happy or unhappy, I see that as the decision of the commission. We weren't necessarily looking for your input, but thanks very much. I actually do appreciate it. I say that with a laugh, but it's always good to have more input. And secondly, about the hat we wear at our commissions and our boards, I think we wear the hat that represents the service and all the people... the hat that represents the service and all the people that are affected by that service. And so when I said at this table, I don't actually represent Courtney, I now represent the whole of Comox Valley. And so I urge any of you that want to be on a commission or are currently on one, that that's the lens that you look through this. And so I represent Area B residents to some extent, and I represent Comox residents to some extent on that commission, and of course Courtney. So I would hope that that's how we would all look at this. And finally, if this board sees fit to send it back to the commission, of course, we will discuss it again and see where it goes. As for doing nothing, I don't think that's going to be the will today. And it would be a stretch for me to put a voting member on the commission in place of, you know, having not been part of the service directly, even though I know there are significant side effects. So that's my take on it, and I'm happy to see a vote happen sooner than later tonight.
So only a few more lights. Director Moran.
Great, thank you Chair. I have a bunch of points and they might not be totally cohesive, but nevertheless, I wasn't at the vote, the infamous vote, but it wouldn't have made a difference because I would have voted the same way as my alternate that night. But a few meetings ago, I did make a point, I think some people heard it, that I, you know, I face this way and I see the gallery. And I, and I don't, you know, there are comments that are made or body language, I mean, I pick up body language pretty well. And I can see increasingly the frustration of the delegation from Curtis Road. And I made the point that it must be incredibly frustrating to come and do a delegation and not be able to actually have a conversation. And I understand that Comox folks did meet with the residents and that's great. But what's happening is not working. Like I feel like we're kind of spinning wheels here because I commend the staff for bringing forward some ideas around communication plans and things like that. Those things will evolve over time. I really, I really think that, I mean, none of these options are great, but I think we do need to continue having a conversation because it's not working the way it is. We have delegations from Curtis Road every, almost every meeting and, you know, I think they're respectful presentations. And for whatever reasons, they don't feel like they're being heard. And I think the onus is on us to create the environment for them to feel heard. And if that means having a non-voting member in the interim and then we relook at it, you know, during the government study or whatever, I agree with Director Hamir that it makes sense to have the Area B representative who's been voted in by that area to be that person. I don't agree with the liaison idea necessarily. I just think that, you know, like I say, when the comments were being made about the Comox councilors meeting, I saw a whole bunch, and your take on how that went, I could see the body language that the residents here didn't agree with that. So I think there's a lot of bridges that need to be built, and I think we need to work, just like we look at Comox First Nations and how we are trying to find ways to communicate and build relationship. I think that as Director Frisch said, the onus, we do represent all of the Comox Valley, even though Area B residents are not paying, I think we have to look at the impact to those residents and we have to find a way to create some kind of dialogue that's meaningful to them and that makes sense and is not continually frustrating for those residents, because it is taking up time and energy. So I think we need to take another look at this. That's basically my non-cohesive, but hopefully made the points clear enough. Spiel.
Thanks very much. We have Director Kettler and Arbor left on the docket for now.
So listening to everybody, I'm thinking that maybe there could be a compromise in that we suggest that the sewage commission create a policy change for a temporary non-voting position for the Area B director until the governance study, the utility governance study. And in that way, we could see, sort of give it a test run and see how it works and if it seems like a fair system for everybody. And then once the governance review is complete, then we can decide whether that was the best fit or there was too many, it became too problematic, or whatever the decision is at that time. But I would suggest that this board recommend to the sewage commission that we have a temporary non-voting position for the Area B director.
Thanks. And Director Arbor, the guy who started it all.
Me?
Well, on this discussion.
Oh, well, I don't want to be accused in four years of not speaking up, so.
Careful.
Yeah, I think Director Kettler's suggestion is actually probably, it sounds right to me, and I really appreciated Director Moran's comments as well in terms of the cost of, I mean, if we're looking for speed, we're not getting speed right now, that's for sure. And now you got the attention of the full board rather than the sewage commission, so this thing is spilling out and it's not, I don't think it's going to get better. What I see is that the sewage commission is dealing with a ton of pressure. I'm not on it, I'm quite outside of it. But you guys are dealing with huge financial decisions coming down, huge costs, a huge amount of infrastructure coming up. So that's our next water, that's sewer. I would encourage, I mean, if you have frustration with the 100 homes and water, while we still contribute, we contribute ideas, we contribute time, we contribute, we study the files. And I think you're not looking at the opportunities perhaps. That's what I would encourage Comox to do in particular, is as you're facing all these costs, part of the solutions can be partnership and new players coming and bringing their monies to bear. And so I'll give you an example. I don't think that was, let me think if that was in camera. I don't think it was in camera. That was yesterday.
We'll stop you if you.
No, well, you won't know, that was at Electoral Areas Committee. We were talking about community, no, it was not in camera. We were talking about community works funding, right? And we were talking about a certain topic around where community works could be going. And I made the suggestion, I said, you know, in another world, it could be that some of the community works funds from the rural areas could contribute to the sewage plant upgrades and other infrastructure pieces that are needed. That's the kind of, you know, there's opportunities for regional collaboration that I think if you start thinking too insular, when you're facing tens of millions of dollars infrastructure projects, I think that having that openness, at least having some kind of discussion or not closing it down. And in this particular case, I don't have a bone in this fight. I mean, in the sense, it's an Area B, but it seems to be, I'm sure, to turn something that's a problem into an opportunity for partnership and moving forward as you're facing all these costs, it's a bit like KFN, everybody mentioned Comox First Nation. That's the attitude that's needed in my opinion, right? Otherwise, we're going to end up with a bunch of fiefdoms. So, thank you. But I support Director Kettler's. And I would love to hear maybe back from Comox if they would support Director Kettler's suggestion to bring it back to the sewage commission with a suggestion from our board, so nothing too heavy-handed, but as a suggestion.
Director Grant, I'll let you respond.
Sure, I can answer that. Well, I see no difference between a temporary position until a governance study is done and having a non-voting member. So I just, I'd see no difference. So I don't see that that changes anything, and it certainly doesn't change the mind that we have of this issue.
Can I speak?
Director Swift, you bet.
Yes, yes. Well, I'm disappointed at the idea that the liaison is not gathering speed, if you like. Because when we spoke with the residents yesterday, one of the things that they were hoping for was the exchange of information. So they want to know when things are coming up, that are going to be happening in their area. And I think a liaison position could work with that quite easily. The problem with having a temporary position, it's not temporary. So if we're having this much discussion on whether somebody should come onto a commission, I can't imagine the amount of discussion we would be having trying to get somebody off a commission. So I don't believe that it would be temporary. If it's the will of the board, I guess that's what we'll work with. But I have not changed my mind in terms of thinking that it's not a good idea to have somebody that has a different allegiance and understanding of the commission.
Right. Sure. I think the difference would be, it would be, as James discussed earlier, a policy change in its nature, that it is temporary as opposed to a bylaw change, which would be a permanent thing. So the removal of that person, I think, would be a lot easier considering it was a policy change rather than a bylaw change.
Director Arbor, I'll let you jump in.
So what you're saying is you could put a clause that there is removals, for example, upon acceptance or receipt of the utilities governance study, or something like that? Just to clarify your thought. Okay, thank you.
Director Moran.
Great, thank you Chair. One of the things I forgot to mention when I spoke earlier was the issue that has already been brought up around the, a particular personality that, in the, the only time I think that this has happened, I don't know, because I don't have the history, but with a past director and it sounded like there was some personality stuff. And I think we can't, we really, I want to reiterate that we can't base a decision on one example of maybe one personality, that we have to look at the bigger picture here. And I, because that was one of the strongest arguments, was about how, you know, a particular person, you know, behaved or whatever. And then, of course, the cost, that, you know, can't play if you don't pay. Those were the two stronger arguments. And I just think the personality pieces, you just shouldn't base a decision on one particular personality, that that's going to be, you know, how this progresses. And then the other piece around liaison, you know, I think that it is a great idea in theory, for sure. I think, I think a liaison position could work in a climate that there, that there was some feelings of trust and relationship. But I think there's, like I said before, I think there's some building of relationship that needs to happen, and I don't think that that can, from what I'm hearing, could happen through a liaison position. Because I think it's about more than just communicating back, although that's one of the things that we've been hearing. I think there's a lot of other stuff that the residents have frustration about. And so I don't think, I don't think a liaison position would necessarily address those things.
And Director Frisch.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair, and I assume there's no one else?
There's actually a few lights at this point, but.
But my time has come nonetheless. And so unless someone shouts out, I'm going to actually make a motion right now.
We're on receipt. You call the question.
I'm willing to, when the time comes, to move that we refer the matter back to the sewage commission for further consideration, to appoint the Area B director on a temporary basis as a non-voting member. So if you guys ever finish the discussion, then that's where I would take it.
Hasn't been an hour just yet, so.
Point of order.
Sorry? Director Reeves, sorry?
Am I mistaken in thinking that as Chair of that commission, you have the purview to actually call for reconsideration?
Legislation would say that it has to be at the subsequent meeting, and we had our sewage commission meeting today, so that time has actually passed.
So it'd have to be the next sewage commission?
No, the decision was.
Oh, we missed it.
By the chair. In June. And so an opportunity for reconsideration would have been that today.
To this time, yeah, okay. So I just thought you could do that arbitrarily.
Maybe the governance study will give us more powers as Chair. Director, well, there's a couple of lights. I'll let Director, there's two lights that I'd like to let go. So Director Hillian, I'll let you speak, and Director Hamir is after that.
Yeah, two points. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that in spite of the disagreement over the representation issue, you know, I have no reservations about the commitment of the, all the members of the sewage commission to resolve the odor issues and, you know, to work hard along with the staff in that direction. I think that's, that needs to be stated without question. The other point I wanted to make is that if somebody's proposing a resolution that, for a temporary appointment, I would suggest that it be made for a specific length of time, for example, one year. And that basically incorporates the, us receiving the government study, and it gives it a final date so that it's definite, and it can then either be renewed or not renewed, depending on what else is developed. But I think having a definite date rather than just calling it temporary makes sense for a number of points. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and Director Hamir.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to make a comment. I did meet with the Curtis Road residents after they met with the Comox councillors and mayor. And I guess in the time between the two meetings, the residents had had some time to digest the suggestion of a liaison. And they did actually tell me quite forcefully that they wouldn't be happy with that, having another person, not their elected representative, be their voice at the table. So they, you know, I just wanted to, I didn't state that strongly enough. And, you know, if there is a motion going forward to send this back to the sewage commission, I just want to point out a couple of things. Again, the length of time that this is going to take and the frustration. But unfortunately, I heard something today at the table that kind of concerns me about what the result of that commission vote will be. I heard, you know, "we haven't changed our mind," the pronoun "we." And that concerns me that certain members of the sewage commission are kind of voting as a block rather than as individuals. And I don't see a change, a vote, that would happen at the sewage commission if it went there. So whatever is decided, I'm assuming this is a question to staff, whether we vote for, or the motion goes forward for a temporary or for a bylaw change, that would be voted on only by the members of the service?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we are at the one hour mark. There are a couple more lights on. Is this new information?
I just wanted to correct Director Hamir in that I said "me" and then I changed it to.
I, and I asked Director Swift to speak on her own behalf.
Okay. Director Frisch.
Yeah, if I get a chance to make a motion, that it would be leaving the temporary measure, the temporary term up to the commission, and that could be up for discussion at the commission level. And I would also hope that we would have a full complement of commissioners at the table, and so we wouldn't end up with a tie vote again. So there's a good chance it might come out differently.
All right. Yeah, and again, I think it's been mentioned, this may be academic for a variety of reasons. So having said that, on receipt, all those in favor, any opposed? And that passes. Director Frisch, you had a, sorry, I was too quick.
My bad, no, sorry. I'd like to move that the board refer the matter back to the sewage commission for further consideration of appointing an Area B director as a non-voting member on the sewage commission for a temporary period of time to be determined by the commission.
Excellent. Any questions or comments based on the motion? See, none, all those in. Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? And you are allowed to vote. Oh, only?
This is, so this is one of the decisions under the operation administration of the service.
Right, and it is weighted.
And so it is just the participants that vote, and they use their weighted votes.
Okay, sorry, my, I'm going to call a vote again. So only Courtney and Comox, all those in favor? And those opposed?
Will record the opposition, and the motion carries.
Motion carries, and that is the recommendation there. Next, we have the Comox Valley Food Policy Council. Excellent. And are there any comments from staff? Sorry.
That's okay.
Running fast here.
Yeah, that's okay, I can certainly answer any questions if you have. I think the report.
Speaks for itself.
Is fairly self-explanatory. The executive summary goes through some of the work that has been done following board direction, and working with the Lush Valley Food Action Society to consider this potential for collaboration and partnership, bearing in mind that this Comox Valley Food Policy Council would be arms-length and administered through Lush Valley Food Action Society, would not be under an existing service of the CVRD. The recommendation is asking for an appointment from Electoral Area Directors to be a part of that food policy council, and to endorse the formation of the council.
Excellent. And Director Hamir, you have something.
Yes, oh, I was just going to put my hat in the ring for appointee, for the recommendation, but also to give my support for the idea of this whole food policy council. Both Director Greve and I have funded the policy council so that they can get started. And I actually know two projects that are kind of waiting in the wings for this policy council to start, so they have their work already cut out for them. So, yeah, thank you.
I see no further questions or comments. Oh, now I do. Director Frisch.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a director from the EAC that would like to sit as alternate.
We get to choose. All right. All those in favor have receipt? Any opposed? And there is recommendation one, which is that we endorse the formation of the Comox Valley Food Policy Council. Oh, no, 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 we're just endorsing. Sorry. I'm not going that fast. All right, so this is. Excellent. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. And now, we're going to be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to, I would definitely like to.
Point Ozina Hamir as our Electoral Area Director, as appointee to the Comox, Comox Valley Food Policy Council.
And the alternate is? Director Greve?
Well, thank you very much. It'll be an honor. That was such a surprise.
Excellent. Did somebody second that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Director Arbor, do you want to argue?
I'd like to complete the motion and further that remuneration expenses be paid, provided remuneration expenses are not paid directly by the external organization.
Oh. Director Greve missed that part. All right. I'll consider that a friendly. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. And we are into the strategic planning session fall 2019. Excellent. And any questions or comments?
I do have a couple points to make. So directors are well aware of the strategic planning session that we held in December. The staff report itemizes the seven or so, I think they're called NOW priorities, that the board came up with back in December. And we're looking ahead to the fall 2019 strategic planning session that is on the calendar. It's October 17th and 18th, I believe. And trying to establish the framework for that strategic planning session. We, since the term started, staff, we've been observing that the directors have a number of strategic drivers, it's a new term that we're using, but a number of strategic drivers that are influencing your decisions and are coming through in the decisions you're making and conversations you're having. The staff report identifies a number of them from things like senior-level government regulations and how to work with those, fiscal constraint, community well-being, and in particular, sustainability, the climate crisis, and indigenous relations. The proposed framework for the 2019 session would be to take those strategic drivers that are most important to the board and apply them to the core services that we have. The staff report talks about nine core services that we deliver, the CVRD delivers, that occupies probably 85 or more percent of the expenditures, the revenues, expenditures, budget. So that's the bulk of what we do. And like I say, the proposed framework would be to take the strategic drivers that you have identified and find ways to apply them to our core services. So it's a bit of a departure from the session we had in December, but I think it really allows you to see what your vision is for your term and see how that vision is applied to the core services that we deliver, whether that be transit, recreation, you know, the regional growth strategy. And it gets us a little bit away from having a list of individual projects that we would be working on, but you will see the vision, your own vision, applied to our core services. The report goes on to talk about what the session can look like. There's a very draft preliminary agenda to that day, or the two days, day and a half. And we also would commit to bring forward some foundational elements in September so that we can talk about, you know, what is sustainability and sustainability scorecard. That's one of the priorities from our current strategic planning session. It's on our work chart. So we commit to bring forward some of those pieces of context so that you have that foundation for heading into our strategic planning session. Happy to go into any more detail with any of this, if you'd like.
Lots of questions, so.
The recommendation is to set the framework for what the October session would look like.
All right. Director Arbor.
I really, really like it. I think it's a really great approach to kind of apply the values and drivers to our core services, so we stay focused in terms of things we actually have a direct influence on. There'll always be outliers, I've been guilty of a couple so far in the term, but overall, I think as a board, it will really help us bring those values of the board to the different departments. So there's nothing that I find not to like in this approach, so I'll be in favor of the framework.
Thank you. And Director Grant.
Thanks, yeah. My comments are quite similar to that. I think that this will really help to keep us on track with the goals of what local government really does and set the roles for, you know, where we should be going. I noticed increasingly, and I'm not talking just about this board, but in general, local government tends to be getting off of what their goals and mandates should be. And I think this is a really good way of bringing that back to where we, to get us back on track to where we are. And in some cases, like the plastic bag ban in Victoria where the court set it down, rather than going down those roads, I mean, that's a very good example of the fact that we should be advocates for that rather than doing those kinds of things. And I think this will put that back into that kind of track so we can stay on the business that we're meant to be doing. So I'm very in favor of this.
Excellent, and it's good to see that the provincial and federal governments is now following our leadership and finally doing it, and I would agree with Director Grant in a much more proper way, but they did, I think, need a little bit of nudging. Director Frisch.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I also really like the framework, and I think it's going to be really helpful as we try to balance, you know, our desire for better environmental responsibility, you know, social responsibility, and of course, economic sociability. So I think this will help us balance those out as we look at some of the opportunities we have, but also costing them out and realizing what we really can do on essentially a limited budget. So, thank you. Look forward to putting it in play.
Thanks. And Director Hillian.
Thank you, Chair. Agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to make the point that I'm assuming that this also fits in with staff capacity, and that becomes one of the drivers that we consider as we're doing this. And so it makes perfect sense to me from that perspective.
Thanks very much. Director Hamir.
Great, thank you. And I will echo the comments about this strategy of moving forward. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions of, you know, some of the areas that we as a board highlighted as a strategic area. For example, C-Veds. Where does that sit in the nine boxes of the functions? Because it is a pretty big function, but does it sit in one of those boxes?
It does, yeah. The, I would say that all of our services will fit into one of those boxes. And it's going to be cultural heritage and arts or regional growth strategy. Regional growth strategy is more than just function 512, planning and building inspection. You know, we're trying to find ways to make sure that our services will fit within, not 99 boxes, but nine, so it's a little bit easier to manage.
Is that also where agriculture would sit?
Yeah, it would be the RGS, it's the community overall.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Director Greve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I do share the concern about staff capacity. You know, we have, we all have our little wish lists. But, you know, in light of the fact that we've lost two real key members over a period of a year, it definitely impacts the electoral areas more than the city. You guys have your own staff, your own planning. And just as a heads up, yesterday at the Electoral Area Services Committee, we passed a resolution that we have a strategic planning session at the electoral area level to deal with stuff that is pretty well, you know, impacts our area and our areas of control and authority. So it's not necessarily the same thing. Regional growth strategy is kind of a, right now, it's kind of a holy cow. And, I mean, holy cow, really? It was designed before the economic meltdown, and the projections that are, of things like population and a lot of the economies there were, you know, based on a lot of assumptions that have since dissolved. There seems to be a big reluctance to open it up, but in the, in my area especially, we're frozen in time with our four hectare minimums. And the fact that, as I mentioned previously, that the government of the day assumed that, you know, that the, through annexation, services would be supplied to the neighborhoods that are in the settlement expansion area. And I don't mean one or two lots, I mean, like, take in all of Croto Beach, right? So, you know, it needs to be refreshed, and I know, I'm not sure we have the capacity with our current staff, or even the inclination to do it. Maybe it should be put off for another year, but eventually, that day of reckoning is going to come, because it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And Director Mauren.
Great, thank you. If all goes well, I'm not going to be here during this time. So I'm supposed to be away, so I'm assuming that I can provide input prior to.
Sure.
Once the agenda is, yeah.
Yeah, and your alternate would be able to attend in your place?
Yeah, great, thanks.
Excellent. Back to Director Grant.
Oh, thank you. Well, on the question of capacity, I think that this will actually help with capacity. I don't think it's going to hurt with capacity. I would assume that staff put this together with that in mind, too. Rather than chasing down all these one-off things, this is going to put them into proper context where they can actually put them in order and do them in an orderly manner. I think that this is going to be good on that, on that point.
We're very mindful of the capacity, and we're not, we're not making this up either. We're stealing heavily from Metro Vancouver, who have much greater capacity, of course, but the concept and some of the process elements are, you know, taking a look at these strategic drivers and how do we apply them to what we're doing? Some hard questions around within, say, transit, for example. What does it look like in the next three years, five years, 10 years to achieve some of the goals, bearing in mind the strategic drivers that the board is setting? And so it's really trying to focus in the service delivery around what it is that the board is most interested in, and keeping things contained, as I think I've heard around the board here.
Directors Swift and Kettler, the only two who haven't spoken. Do you have any comments? Not to call you out, but. Director Kettler.
No, I mean, I think, yeah, I would just echo what everybody else said, so that's why I didn't put on my mic.
Fair enough. Okay, and you can just nod your head. All right. Thanks very much. I just want to make sure you did have that opportunity. On receipt, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. And there is a recommendation that the framework presented to the staff, the guy at the Comox Valley Regional District Strategic Planning. All right. And all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously? Excellent. Yeah, well, I was just going to say, there's no new business, as far as I know. I just look around, just in case somebody thinks of something. And there's no media, of course, because it's the regional district at 6 o'clock. Director Frisch.
We adjourned to a in camera, restricted in camera meeting.
Somebody would like to second that?